Can you handle that? Tony didn't get to go to that Baltimore too much, did he? I saw you one time. It was cold as blue blazes here. You look like Nanook in the north. It was like in April or whatever it was.
What the heck?
Yeah, there were some times. Well, today I was more than afraid because I started, if you started, you admitted.
Got finished.
So thankfully I wasn't begging at that point yet.
I put it in enough for two. I already bought Arden one. That's all I can, I've been, I've been being tight. Nothing you know when you go.
Thanks Scott.
Hey, we appreciate you having on the phone with us for a little bit here. Do you have a minute?
Yeah.
All right, this sounds good. We will get the meeting called order. We're going to turn the volume up here a little bit. Do you hear us okay? All right, with that, we will call meeting order. We'll start with what we need. Let's begin to defy with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. For everyone that's here, if, um, if you take a look, we've got updated agendas over there. All the same business items that were posted, um, just in a little bit different order than the way they were posted, but, um, kind of abbreviation of the business items out there. So take a look at that. If you have any questions, um, we will have a couple of things happen tonight. We've got, we've got, uh, Councilman Nelson's last meeting. He's served us very well for years and years and years. And so this is his last meeting tonight. And we've got a couple of new council members that will later be coming out tonight as well. So, um, so you'll see what will happen is, is we'll actually start as an old council. We'll adjourn and then we'll reconvene in the council. So, so if you hear us adjourn, it doesn't mean that we missed your agenda. I'm just coming up a little bit ahead. So just be right with that. So with that, we'll start off with, with roll call.
Okay, Brenneman.
Brenneman here.
Okay, Keel.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Mayor Manning, I guess. Or are you? And Monahan's absent with notice.
All right. Do we have any motions on the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. We will all vote separately. We had Jones.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
And Nelson.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve previous minutes?
Show move.
Is your motion for six sixteen and six twenty-nine?
Six fifteen and six twenty-nine. Thank you.
Correct. Second. Second to hold. Discussion. Keel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
And Jones.
Yes.
And do we have any others?
And there we are, ready.
We're ready.
So, um, this moment, Scott, how many years is it been?
Eight.
Eight years.
Eight, two months and one hour. No, five minutes.
Eight years, two months.
Come on, I'm over here.
We're doing that already?
Yeah, we're doing that already.
Okay.
We're doing that already.
Can't wait to get my butt kicked out of here, huh?
Where are we at? We want to.
I don't know if you're ready for it. Eight years, two months, yes, doesn't.
Don't worry about the months.
But from the city of Hartford, we want to thank you for all of your service. You've been through a whole bunch of different ups and downs and everything else you can think of along the way. It's just been, I, it's been a pleasure for me to serve you during part of this time that you were on here. And I just want to thank you for all the time that you put in and everything you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your camaraderie. It's been amazing.
Yeah.
Appreciate that in that round. Thank you. No, no, any other comments from the council?
Nelson's the squeakiest member.
There we go.
In fact, there's an oil can sitting somewhere there.
Do I have an opportunity for a quick shot?
Somebody may take your spot.
I didn't, right?
Somebody may take your spot as the oil can person.
Well, I figured as much, they're right there.
Thank you for your guidance, Scott. Best of luck. Too bad.
All right, with that, Ward three, Levon Randall won, won that ward. And, um, it's time for her to all come up this, so we can have her come up.
We're doing, going against the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Wait a second, what's, I, hold it, hold it.
Hold on.
You got a new agenda. The new agenda. Okay, well, you go ahead and take care of Levon, but I got, I got 60 seconds I can encapsulate, okay?
We'll make sure we get to it.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm sorry, you know me.
I mean, come on.
Take care of Levon.
60 seconds.
I'm on a timer.
Yeah. I knew you would, Justin.
I fix you.
Yeah. Look around for pictures.
Am I supposed to respond?
I'm Levon Randall, having been elected to the office as councilperson Ward three within and for the city of Hartford. In said county and state, DeSalle Valley swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said city town Hartford, and that I will go faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson Ward three.
All right.
Okay.
Yep. All right, then let Scott talk.
You threw a curve at me.
Scott, are you ready?
You stinker.
Mark can only beat yourself.
Well, I'm looking at the agenda. We all, we all abide by agendas, right? And the agenda that's sitting over there that you're looking at is different than what I'm looking at because I'm used to pulling up stuff and then doing this. All right, so Nelson does this for you, everybody's going, oh God, he's going to go and, you know, buy a better speech. No, I'm not going to do that, all right? Justin put me on timer. Here we go. First and foremost, um, I want to thank the people of Ward three for electing me in 2012. Uh, that was, uh, an experience that I learned a lot from. Didn't happen after that, but, uh, it was, it was really, really wonderful. I, I gotta go where, I wish you was on the phone right now, Mr. Monahan, so make sure you tell him that I picked on him a little bit. Uh, he was a pain in the butt to deal with during those early years, but without him, um, it really would have been a challenge. And, uh, so, uh, I'm not going to expand on the early years in any way, shape or form. I want to thank Levon Randall and Gail Wilson Duck for working for Ward three, okay? And, um, as I looked at the agenda, I did it about an hour and a half ago. Thank you, Mark Monaher, Mark O'Hara for running out for accepting the position for Ward two, okay? Uh, looking back at the last eight years, two months, and I was thinking one hour according to the agenda, that's. Uh, you know, some of the things I, I gotta, I have to reflect on is, uh, my prime moments really, um, are, are the fact that, that, um, when we first came, when I first came into this, uh, there was a lot of people in this room. We had news cameras over here and it's been an honor since that time to serve with the people who have been at this table. Um, it's, it's been gratifying, it's all get out, to, to, uh, to go from this, you know, and people out in the hallway and fire code officers and all kinds of fun things to, uh, to where we're at today. Um, and, and I want to thank all of you, um, even you Brenneman. Say yes, Scott.
He can't hear.
Okay, he's like, ah, whatever, okay. Uh, for, for doing such a great job. Uh, we're definitely moving forward as far as that part of it goes. Um, this council has done tremendous things. I look forward to seeing what this young man over here can do, uh, besides play football. And, uh, and I ask to, um, that, uh, that, uh, for Mark and Levon, keep your citizens in mind. It is, it is not as your opinion, it's their opinion. They put you here and, and so that's, uh, what I found is the most important thing that I can share with anyone. Thanks for your time and I'll shut up now.
Thanks Scott.
Same here, I got one other quick one.
Yes, absolutely.
You guys maybe don't know, Nelson usually wears the earpiece.
Yeah, well, I couldn't find it. I couldn't hear the damn thing.
I didn't realize early on that even when he was in the bathroom, he could hear us and I was taking pretty good shots at him. Shots at him up here about something. I can't remember what it was and he came back and he's in his ear and he just stood up.
You know what? I, I, I don't, I'm not hard of hearing. I just did it just to give you.
That was by my desk, my spot here. I'm not sure if, uh, somebody was giving me a clue that I need, uh, to start listening.
It's over here?
I moved it back up here.
Right in the middle, right here. Am I still sitting down?
You're still here.
I'm still here. I know, so the new agenda just goofed me up.
We started running, I don't know whether we gave you a good explanation for that, Scott. We started to run into quorum issues and Brenneman can only be here for a little bit. So that's why we've got the same business items, but we had to rearrange them so that we could, so we can move along.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing your homework. Sorry you can't vote on any of it.
It's all good.
Yep. No, we really appreciate it. We, I, we just really appreciate all, everything you've done as this new council has come on over the last four years. Your guidance, your leadership has, has helped us a lot. We really appreciate all the institutional knowledge and everything you brought to us. My pleasure. Thank you.
I might pull a Brett Favre on you if, uh, Arden gets out of the line, just so you know.
There you go. Come back. Come back.
Part of words.
Brenneman did try to say some things, Scott. Yeah, he did say some things.
All right, with that, um, we do have an open position on Ward two, uh, which, uh, Brittany Glazer was, was in at that point. Uh, she had moved to a different ward, which left an opening. And, um, so at this point, I would like to make an appointment for Ward two, which would be an appointment that will last through until the next election cycle. And so with that appointment, I'd like to appoint Mark O'Hara to city council in Ward two. If you don't know Mark, Mark's been very active in the community, dedicated, um, with Chamber, Chamber of Order, and recently very, very active with the HEDF and, uh, Capitol Campaign that's going on. So Mark showed a lot of leadership in Hartford. I think he'll be a, a great addition to our council. So.
A motion to approve that.
So we have a motion to approve the appointment?
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Mark O'Hara as Ward two city council member.
May I be a second?
Nelson? All right. Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right. Let's have Mark come up and give the applause. Hi, Mark O'Hara, having been elected unimposed to the office of councilperson Ward two within the city town of Hartford, in that county and state, DeSalle Valley swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the city and town of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all the duties of my said office, councilperson Ward two. I don't know if Mark realizes that in two years, maybe three, you're going to buy a new house in a different ward.
Yeah, that's a trend. That's a trend.
Just so you know.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn as an old council?
Well, I may say, I would like to make a motion to adjourn as old council. Please.
I'll second that. Nelson, second. Keel? All right, we'll vote. Brenneman?
Right.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Brown.
Are you meeting order? And we'll go back to roll call.
Okay, Keel.
Here.
Randall?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Brenneman and Monahan are absent with notice.
And I make.
Oh, I'm there. Oh, gosh, come here.
He's still here, Brian.
He's still here, okay.
Still here.
Okay.
All right, next item up, we've got a chance for public comments and the on agenda items. So anybody that'd like to come on up? Steve, this would be a great chance. Yeah, this is a good chance to introduce yourself.
My name is Steve Nolan. I think I know everybody at least a little bit. Uh, I don't know if we've met.
I know who you are.
Messed it up, dude. I was appointed by Mayor Manning, um, to fill the vacant seat in the fighting zone here. So we just moved here February last year. So we've been here a little over a year and a half. Looking forward to, uh, helping out in the community and doing my part to support the local economy by drinking Buffalo River beer when I'm in a church. And, uh, enjoy being in this small town. I grew up in a small town in Minnesota. In fact, it was just down the highway from Tony. Uh, he grew up in Lazzur and I grew up in Bell Plain. And he actually was, had one of my sisters in his high school class, so a little connection there. So. Glad to be able to, uh, stop here and say, uh, thanks for the opportunity to help the city grow.
Steve, you live up, what do we call it? Is that Trojan?
Trojan?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What is that? I should know what that's. Cousin, or Matt cousin, sorry.
West, uh, Caspella.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, we can't, can't really enter the war zone since we moved here because there's been methodist construction. So we moved in this, five houses last year and they disassembled the foundation for two more, so that could be the fourth and fifth one this year.
That's good. So you've got eyes on.
Good.
They're going to be ripping your street up pretty soon.
Yep.
Ruin normal anyway.
Yeah, I, we were talking about that briefly at the fighting zone.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, any other public comments on getting out of the agenda? Do you have anything you'd like to comment on tonight?
Yep.
I'm just checking. I'm giving you a chance. If you want to come on up, you sure can. If you got something that's not on the agenda anyway. Did anybody? Did anybody? Check on? Yes, I think I know what you're hitting at. Water deal? So if I remember correctly, Teresa can probably give the best update, but Mark Monahan, council member in your, in your ward over there, that spoke with you, has talked with Teresa a little bit. We're looking at, looking at a couple of different options out there about having some. Can you give an update on that, Teresa?
Yeah, so you know, Mark Monahan, who came out and talked to you, comes and looked at your property, he, um, was going to try to get ahold of your neighbor. I don't know if he's done that yet or not, but during the discussion, he also wants the city to work on, um, coming up with a policy about discharging water onto other people's property. So we're looking at that and seeing what other cities do to hopefully adopt something like that that could potentially help in situations like this. So we'll, we'll be looking at doing something on the city end as far as adopting a water policy, but he's still going to meet with your neighbor, as far as I know, to, to kind of pursue your issue right away.
Ain't there something that the city's supposed to write him a letter?
Well, he, Mark Monahan wanted to talk with the neighbor first to see if he could just get him to do something with, outgoing down that road.
Wait, the city never, never, never will not write him a letter?
Well, I'm saying we won't never write him a letter, but Mark Monahan wanted to just personally talk with your neighbor first, um, explain the situation and see if he can get him to make adjustments so his water, you know, doesn't come onto your property anymore. And, I think, he's on vacation right now, so hopefully when he gets back, I'll, we'll kind of narrow him down to see if he's done that or not.
I guess there are no, no more. Ah, you're mayor.
No, I, we appreciate them.
If.
Yep, and it's continued to be worked out, so thank you. All right, with that, unless we have any other public comments? I'm on in visitor's section. This is for Danny Bradbearns in Central School. Hello?
Hello?
Hey, Brad.
Good evening. Plug in some technology and the stars of the line will work. And I hope it doesn't catch you in the eyes, but it's going to shine right up there. Yeah, looks like it's coming up. So, um, earlier, several days ago, Mr. Jones contacted me and said, hey, people want to know what the schools need to do here to start the school year. I saw Craig and Teresa earlier this year and I said, actually, I'd like to see your crystal ball because ours is a little foggy yet. But, uh, you can see, uh, starting well, 2020, 21, the school year, uh, starting well is what the state of South Dakota, the Department of Education is, is calling our start of the school year. So that's, that's the reference there. What I'm going to share with you tonight are the things that we have been, um, using to determine what our school year will look like. We have been given the charge to plan on more than one scenario, and this is throughout the state. And actually, you probably find this throughout the nation, that at this point, schools have to, uh, plan on multiple, um, uh, scenarios basically for the school year. So, in our planning. In our planning, um, what have we been doing since March 11? And March 11 is the day that we, we were the first school in the state to call off because of a COVID, um, positive, um, case. We've been doing Zoom. I don't know about you, Zoom, Zoom, Zoom. Thank goodness it was there, uh, because we have used it a lot. And we've used Zoom, teachers with students, and if some of you have kids in school, uh, you probably know that, um, from March 11 on, a lot of communication between teachers and students, um, on Zoom. We've also used Zoom for building principals to have meetings with our teachers. Those meetings have been ongoing. They just now have started to relax, uh, some of those meeting, um, frequencies. Our administrative team, um, just took a couple of weeks off, but we have been meeting, uh, as an admin team. Starting March 11, we were, um, in the conference room for about six hours that day, about six hours the next, about four hours the day after that, and it's been constant since then. Uh, all with how do we wrap up the school year, but now how do we get, uh, things in place for the coming? The Department of Education, I would just say, we are fortunate in this state to have good people in our Department of Education. They've been very attentive to, uh, the questions that we have, the concerns that we have, our needs, uh, for the upcoming school year. Metro area superintendents, um, have met a number of times, so the metro area would be Sioux Falls and the immediately surrounding districts. It's been very helpful for that group to get together multiple times, um, since March. We also have a large school group, superintendents of superintendents, and that is basically the largest 22 schools in the state, um, we meet as well. And then region superintendents, which would be, uh, regardless of size, it's all the superintendents in this area. So with, um, planning, a lot of these people, these groups are playing a part in what we're doing to get ready for the school year. We are looking at four areas of focus in our planning. Instruction, of course, being one, communication, resources and operations. We are within instruction, um, we're taking a look at what does it look like if we are doing instruction in person with the kids. Physically, in each room, we are taking a look at how do we set up our rooms so that we are doing our best to mitigate, um, the COVID, uh, issues. A blended learning, uh, platform for instruction would look like, you might bring kids in on a group of kids, a cohort on Monday and Tuesday, and then a different cohort comes in on Wednesday and Thursday, uh, and then Friday is, is Zoom if need be with kids. That approach is being considered by schools because you have now lessened the number of people in the buildings. Concerns with that, daycare for parents, um, and then also you've now potentially cut back your spoken sequence of instruction in half because you only have the kids there half the time. So that's a, that's a big concern. And then of course, the distance learning, which is what we did, um, from now until the, from March until the end of the school year. And then communication, um, school board has been given updates. I send out a weekly update to them, um, regardless of COVID, they get that. And then parent updates, uh, we've tried to, when we have more information, we send that information out to the parents so they kind of know where things are at as well. Staff updates, so that they know, uh, what changes might be coming. And also we want to hear from them about concerns that they might have. And then with, um, our resources, CDC has been a very important resource for us. We want to follow their lead so that we're using research-based approach, uh, in the things that we're doing. Department of Education, as I mentioned earlier, they've been very helpful for us this year, um, through this whole thing and, um, just a lot of great people, um, working on things at the Department of Ed. The Department of Health has been there for us, even when we had the first case here, uh, had direct contact with the Department of Health and they gave, uh, gave us direction on things to watch for, um, things to do, not to do, uh, through that whole process. Operations, this is things like sanitation of the buildings, the buses, the vans. This is a big, big part of what we have been doing and it's going to be even bigger, uh, once we, um, try to get things up and running again. Logistics for building usage, as I mentioned earlier, uh, do we bring in part of the kids, but not all of the kids? Building usage is going to be a very important piece of, of moving forward. And our next steps would be to finalize our starting well plan. Tomorrow morning, I'll be with the admin team and we will finish putting together what will go to the school board, um, at the next school board meeting for our, our presentation to say, here's how we believe we should start the school year, um, and then get their input on our plan. And then sharing that starting well plan out with families or staff and community as well. We have, I think, some of the, uh, best students, parents, staff that we could have asked for through this whole thing. We know that in a lot of our homes, uh, parents were still working, then they were coming home at night and spending several hours with kids doing homework. We have staff, uh, not just teachers, but also our educational aides, uh, making personal contact with students, trying to help them, um, move things along, encourage them to stay engaged in the learning, um, and that was a huge part of it. And I know that, uh, people are waiting for this plan. They want to know what we're doing in West Central. And once the school board puts eyes on it, then yes, we will get this out to the community, but the, the school board needs to see it first. I can, I can share with you that we had surveyed parents. I, I can share with you that we had surveyed parents and we put the question to them. Would you prefer to have your students in school for learning or would you prefer distance learning? And of the parents that replied, which was about 70-plus percent of our parent population, 96% said you want our kids in school. So, um, I think what you'll find in the state of South Dakota and through the nation is that people, on the whole, want the kids in school for the learning. Uh, there's just a whole, uh, lot of things that go along with that, that environment that, uh, we can't replicate over long distance learning. So, um, a lot of, a lot of man hours going into this planning. Very thankful for our custodial crew. Uh, I tell you what, our schools are looking very, very clean. They have scrub and scrub and, uh, done a great job. So we're, we're excited, um, for the day that we can bring those kids back into the classrooms. I'll be glad to come back, uh, and share details of the plan once our school board has a look at it, if, if that would be of interest. Because we want the community to be with us and know what's going on, you know, beginning of the school year.
That's why I asked Brad. I thought it would be good, this is as good a forum as anywhere for people to find out what's going on. Because we do get asked frequently, what's the school doing? And we say, well, we don't know. Well, why don't you know? They want, they want us to know. So, that's, that's what drove us. I appreciate Brad, you put this together and coming in. Um, I do have a question because this has just been in the news. So now they're really talking, uh, recirculation or air or something. What is that gonna mean or do?
Right, so the air handling systems, um, we can blend the percentage of outside air that is going into the rooms. Okay? So what we're looking to do is up that percentage of outside air and not recirculate so much of the inside air. Now, once we hit winter time, that does mean that we will probably spend more on heating. Uh, because when you bring in a, a bigger percentage of outside air, you're, you're losing some heat. But, um, there are schools who have looked into bringing additional units in, uh, that hook into the, the rooftop units, um, to help. But there's no way to tell that those are going to do a better job. I mean, they say this will help, to what degree? You know, that type of thing. So, yes, uh, the air quality is going to be a, a point of.
Yeah, that's really been the news there the last couple of days.
And the day in and day out, you know, if you have kids in the building, how often do you have them use the hand sanitizer? Do they wash their hands? Um, those type of things. I would share with you this. At the beginning of every school year, and I go into the elementary schools, first day of school, our own custodian, um, the classes, okay, we have what's called PBIS. It's a program that helps our kids understand, here are the expectations on the playground, here are the expectations in the lunchroom, in the hallways, those type of things. And now here's the expectations when you go to use the restroom and you're going to wash your hands. Our custodians show the kids, they set them down, here's how you wash your hands appropriately. So we were doing that pre-COVID. Um, I, I think there are some good things that schools are in the habit of doing. And we're just going to try to, um, make sure that, of course, we're doing those things, but we're bringing as much extra into the environment as possible.
I guess, yeah, Brad, you, you know, you and your team, your all your staff members, the responsiveness, flexibility, you know, has been, has been outstanding, you know, in that first school district that, that had to shut down kind of as a surprise right there. And then, and then thinking you're going to come back, oh, but it's not. Has been, just as a parent of, I, at the time, a fourth grader and seventh grader, now it's going to be a fifth grader and an eighth grader. Um, I can tell you, your staff did, did a fantastic job. Their dedication was awesome. It was really, um, it was good to see how things just transitioned into a different type of learning. So, so that's unbelievable.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks Brad.
Brad? We just said I was still a little preoccupied in the meeting of representation, uh, athletics. Did you touch on that?
You betcha. Um, so we, of course, work with South Dakota National Activities Association on those, um, athletic things. And they are staging. So within the first few days, we were allowed, uh, no more than 10 people in a workout session. We were not holding practices. In fact, we're still not holding practices. So for, uh, the first 10 to 14 days, I think it was, you could have nine kids and one instructor within a certain, um, square footage. So we had kids sign up. Uh, we went through a, uh, protocol of when you step in the building, we're taking your temperature. Have you, you know, have you, have you, have you, are you, uh, all the questions? And then they went to phase two. You can increase the number of kids, uh, in a session, still no practices, but just workout sessions. So we've hit stage two. We're now moving into stage three where we can bring into, uh, a workout session, I think it's up to, uh, 30 or 40 kids. So we're, we're in that stage right now. So you are seeing cars in the parking lot, kids are coming in to do workouts. Um, we have, uh, a very good ratio of coaches to students because those are typically one-hour sessions. So it's not like a practice where we would run multiple hours every time. So they're gonna do what they can to keep activities moving forward. I'll be honest, uh, we don't know what the season might look like at this point.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Brad.
Thank you.
Alright, we're moving to the next section of our agenda applications grievance hearing, resolution of grievances. First thing we have, uh, is a block party application for South Main and, uh, general blocks. I think yours is pretty straightforward, if I remember right, doing a block party?
Yes. Asking for roadblocks?
Yes.
And that's about it?
That's about it. Any issues on that at all?
No, we'll be on there.
This is this Saturday, right?
Yes.
Yep.
I did this last year, so my house wasn't in charge of it.
Sure.
Um, so what do we need to do with the roadblocks? Do we have to have them moved? Do we just leave them there?
We typically bring them down, just set them like on that intersection. And then you guys just set them up and then take them down and just set them back and then put them on a shoulder there or whatever, so.
Okay. And what's our timeframe? I know I put like, I didn't know that we could have it for 24 hours. So just have it set up in the morning and then move it in the, the following morning? Or do you want us to move it before?
Yeah, what's your best plan?
I think you probably should slide them off to the side. Uh, they're pretty easy to move. When you wrap everything up, just to let, if there would be a rescue call or something like that, uh, fire trucks or anything wouldn't have to stop to get, move barricades. So just, yeah, just make a, slide them off to the side enough where you get some traffic through.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the application for the block party on, uh, South Main this Saturday, July 1. Motion. Second?
Second? Discussion?
Only discussion point would be because you're specificing your application to 10:00 PM. And we just all are aware that it'd be until midnight or, or 1:00 or whatever it is, but then those barricades would be moved, discussed.
Yeah, like I, I didn't know, I just, we can make sure that it's moved, but people, but it'll probably be moved.
Sounds good.
After we're done with the party or whatever.
It does, absolutely. That works. That works. Yeah, the discussion. Alright, Randall?
Yes.
Okay. Kiel?
Yes. Yes.
Sweet, thanks guys.
You bet. Thank you.
Alright, we also have a block party for Fourth Street. And see if there's anything different on this one either, about the same. Any, anything different?
Can I just change the time? I guess, on ours, I know we put like 3:00 to 9:00 in that.
3:00 to 9:00?
Yes, and I think, I mean, if we change that.
You guys can.
We can, right? We can approve it with a different.
You can prove it with whatever time you want.
I don't know, like.
Three, four days or?
No, just.
Months, you want to start tomorrow?
No, just that, I mean, because we, my husband and our two younger children and the neighbor across the street, the neighbor next door, all have a birthday within that timeframe. And so we just wanted to just do like, you know, an all-day chindin type, type deal. And so we just didn't know like what would have been appropriate, I guess. And so if we could start earlier, that would be awesome, to like 10:00, I guess, because like noise or minutes back from the staff.
Give us a, give us something to go off of then, I'm sure you're getting a motion.
Do you want eight in the morning until 10 o'clock at night?
Just like that? Put it in my head? Eight to 11?
The noise or it does come in effect, I love it. I probably don't want so much past that.
Right, 11. Yes, 11.
I didn't notice, did you pay the fee? No?
Yes, I did, no.
There wasn't a mark. I make a motion to approve the block party application, amending the time from, from 8:00 AM till 11:00 PM on August 15th. For Fourth Street.
I'll second that. Discussion.
That's quite a ways away from me, so you can do it very well. Wait, that's not appropriate. That's closer than Nelson, so I don't care.
I just have a question. On the application, it said, um, we will provide barricades, tables, and trash cans. So do you guys have barricades or do you want the city?
So, um, we, so the neighbor works for DTS and so he can provide barricades. Let's work for Craig, you know?
That's why we just, just want to make sure you don't want us to get them out there.
Yeah, we just figured that's work. And then we just bring them up, set them off, like, you know, not like set them up, but off to the side and then set them up and then take them off to the side.
Looking at the agenda, they can make some money in town. Yeah. Barricades.
And then you'll just be sure to move them off.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
Perfect. Alright. Kiel?
Yes.
Go ahead. Randall?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
You made your ask, thank you.
You found us on a good night.
Alright, oh wait, we also have the special event application for Public Safety Day. Stay, stay right there. For her, for her, if you're asking.
Hi.
Just give us a brief, yeah, just kind of a brief, this, how many, how long have you been doing this?
So, um, we decided to take away, um, like the street dance. And we decided to do like a public safety day. We feel like it's a duty to our community to, um, just try and teach them to be safe and what kind of different deals they can do to help, um, prevent us being caught, I guess. So, um, we, our first go-around was last year. And then, um, we decided to do it this year again because we felt like it was a good thing for the community. Our turnout was great. We did not advertise really, I think, at all. Uh, maybe a few Facebook posts, but that was kind of it. So we felt like the turnout was great. So we feel like this year's going to be better. We, we still have people to talk about last year and things like that. I know last year, we brought in the helicopter, which we're going to do again. Um, we have game fishing parks, um, coming out to teach, um, like shooter safety. And they're bringing a boat for water safety, that kind of stuff. Let's see, the Minnehaha County Sheriff, um, will come out and they'll do some, some, uh, things as well. Along with the South Dakota Emergency Medical Services for Children. And they will do like, um, poison prevention, bicycle helmets, just that kind of stuff. So it's all different, um, stations, different booths, other, um, organizations, things like that that we're involved with that come out and, um, help us teach our community different ways to be safe.
Last year was great, but I thought maybe last year was the first time you've had that.
It, it was, so, and it's done pretty good. So this is my first year cheering, so we'll see how it goes.
Yep. Good. Any questions?
Motion. Motion to approve special event application for her, for her, for her, asking Public Safety Day, waiving the application fee.
Second? Discussion. Are you done? Oh, Randall?
Yes.
Kiel?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Guys.
Thank you. Have a great event. I actually have second reading, word is 687, which is amending the off-street parking regulations. No changes since first reading. So with this, if any, you know, new council members can be brought up speed, I probably heard Teresa, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I've read it, but, um, you got questions, I mean, that, please ask.
Wasn't the big thing that we added that you had, somebody administrator had the, uh, right to approve a special application?
Yeah, for a temporary, right? Because, yeah, so this is in our zoning regulation, it's for all street parking, so on somebody's yard or somebody's premises. Um, that's covered in our zoning regulation. The highlighted paragraph, the last part of it, nine, is basically adding, um, for the city to approve a temporary pass. Uh, the maximum amount of days is 30 days. This has been vetted through the Planning and Zoning Board. Kind of had an incident come up with it, which kind of prompted it, but we, you know, all our ordinance as it is, addresses just permanent parking, doesn't address anything temporary. So we thought we need to put something for certain situations that are just going to be temporary. So that's what this addresses. We had first reading, um, last meeting and passed, and this is the second reading.
So Teresa, just a quick question. If somebody has their 30 days and let's say their house is on, is being constructed or it's being re, reconstructed, total redo, are they able to get another 30 days if they come in again and explain their situation?
That's kind of what we talked about with the planning and zoning board, that we'll do the first go-around, just 30 days. And if, you know, for whatever reason, if you don't get it done, if it's reasonable, then you'd have to come and apply for another cast and then you can do another 30 days. So you always have to, every 30 days, come back and, you know, have it reviewed. So you just don't give them six months, you know, right away or whatever. They, it's got to be reviewed to make sure they're making progress or whatever the case may be, yeah.
I make a motion to approve second reading, a word of 687.
Second?
Second, Randall? Discussion. Are you done? You vote? Go ahead. Randall?
Yes.
Kiel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
I actually have second reading, word is 689, is amending the golf cart regulations. No changes on this one as well, kind of the seating requirements.
And this one, basically, like Dermot said, this is second reading as well. This is our golf cart regulations. We added wording under 7.0907. It's what's in red in your packet there. But basically, um, this is brought to us by the Sheriff's Department. There's some unsafe situations going on out there with, um, lots of riders on a cart, lots of people standing on them, children, you know, they're driving or not. So we added section C, D, and E to basically address how many riders you can have in a golf cart. Um, and it would be whatever the manufacturer's placard is for that. Or if it's been modified, it brings it down to basically, if you got bucket seats, one person per seat. Or if a bench, you could have three people. And then added that, you know, can't have anybody standing on it, you know, hopefully everybody falls off and then no, no kids on your lap. So, and it's just mainly for safety measures.
I did hear from a former council member, Lanza, she threw her two cents that she would like to see this approved.
Sure. So. I just wanted to bring that up, because she did, she reached out to me and said that she would like to.
And she has a golf cart, nice year driving it around, so that's, that's good. I heard from a member of my ward who doesn't own a golf cart, nor do they have children, and they said this is restrictive and is un-American and not what South Dakota stands for. And then they laughed, but, um. So, I think there's, you could literally get six people on a golf cart if it's been modified with two bench seats, so that's, that's including a lot of people. So, but I don't think it's too restrictive.
Yep. Not too un-American. All right, do they have any motions?
I make a motion to approve second reading ordered at six eighty-nine.
Go have a second.
I'll second.
All right. All right. More discussion. All right, you vote? Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
All right. What's your case? All right, next item, we're moving over into new business, we, it's time to elect with our, with our new councils, and to elect our new council president and our new council vice president. And, um, so with this, I have to do this every year, but, um, basically we look for nominations, and as nomination, then, as we get nominations, like we continue to go, we would vote on them if need be. Um, otherwise, if anybody would like to cease nominations, you can always do that as well, so. Anything I missed on there, Teresa?
Nope, pretty much, um, the council can nominate anybody, um, Jeremy called for nominations, you have a nomination, throw it out there. Um, anybody can cease nominations at any point, and depending if we have one, two, or three, you vote on the nominations, so. And this is just for this one year, I'll go to the next election, um, every year we vote on president and vice president.
All right. All nominations.
Would be, both would have it if we tabled it until we have a full council.
Have a think of it?
I don't think it's gonna.
We just.
Move the table of the election of council president, vice president till our next council meeting.
I see a motion. Go have a second.
I'll say.
Okay, no discussion on the table? You'll vote? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
All right. Let's move. Next, uh, we have review pledge month for HADF, envision twenty twenty-five. Al, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a, um, envision twenty twenty-five update for you. The campaign began in January of this year and is starting on month six of activities. There was a three-week pause during the month of April, and that pause can be tagged back at the end of the campaign if, as needed. The campaign has earned sixteen pledges valued at one point one nine three million dollars, plus five pending pledges valued at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which potentially raises the result to date to one point three million. Notably, Sunshine Foods pledged fifty thousand dollars in addition to a prior ten thousand dollar pledge, and the pledge is paid in full, which is to say there's considerable enthusiasm for the campaign and the community support for it, both from the public and the private sector. I wanna thank in particular all the board members for their assistance, foundation board members, particularly President Justin Ike, campaign co-chairs Travis, Keel, and Keith Matisson, and also Blair Baffet and Dave Larson, who helped with the things to pay solicitations, and also Mark O'Hara, thank you for your assistance with that. The door-to-door, um, openings and the in-person solicitations are crucial support activities, um, to help achieve or exceed the campaign goal. That's the hard work of the campaign, and there's a lot of help from both the board at the foundation and from the chamber. With the assistance of, of, uh, those two organizations, we're making as many contacts as possible for the next two months to complete the solicitations and pledge commitments by the end of August or sooner after as possible. And the assistance of an intern, uh, North Newtonson, who I believe most of you have met, has been helpful to manage the appointments, the correspondence, the files, and the campaign database. Any questions, um, on those back roads from, uh, council?
No questions, but, um.
Well.
Congratulations on your progress, that's, those are fantastic numbers, that's really, really, really good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to yield to, uh, Justin as president of the foundation, and, uh, Keith as co-chair of the campaign with respect to, uh, the council's investment in, in vision twenty twenty-five. Justin?
First off, the HADF would really like to thank the city for their involvement in this envision twenty twenty-five campaign. Like I alluded to, there's been a lot of, um, a lot of good energy that's come out of these meetings, I've been involved with probably four, four or five of them, and continues to go forward, so. Uh, with that, we would like to, uh, request the pledge balance for the current year. Um, I know there was an initial payment, and we would just like to see the balance for year one, if we could, um, have a motion or to get that, the remaining balance of the funds for year one of this campaign from the city.
And just for some back, backstory on that a little bit too, do you remember when was that ask? Um, we were just in the beginning of COVID at that point, is that correct?
April.
April?
May.
Right, right, April, May, somewhere right in there? Okay. And I believe, gosh, was that on a Zoom meeting? We were on a.
Yes.
Um.
Yes, it was.
Electronic meeting, it wasn't Zoom anyway, but it was going even better.
Yeah.
There was a little bit of concern at the time, like, what's gonna happen, are we gonna use our researches somewhere else? What's gonna happen with sales tax dollars? Um, all of those kind of things, and, um, um, you know, we were blessed that everything's gone really, really well, that we didn't need to do anything in an emergency type of thing. Our sales tax dollars, um, Teresa's given us some updates on that, but they seem to be stronger than they were last year.
I'd say we're, we're a little ahead, so that's good. Cautiously optimistic.
Yep.
I wanna say we're good, but.
It is.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe a two and a half.
Um, what was the remaining amount of pledge? Do you remember like, when you break it down by years? I don't remember exactly what.
One thirty.
Was it one thirty per year?
Okay. Well, no, it was one eighty, but.
One eighty is the one.
So one thirty is about hours.
Gotcha.
Cause back in April, I mean, there was fifty. A thousand dollars.
Yep. Yep. Questions? Motions?
And another note, as we go forward, we're working on having a, you know, like a, a board, but we just had our initial, um, starting to talk about that at our last Wednesday's meeting. So, you know, as this campaign, as we get more funds in, we're gonna, um, look to how we're gonna have a management board of that. We had a film there, we talked just to, we know it's something, so we wanted to get it out in front of all the board members, and we had a hundred percent attendance, so it was a good meeting to have that, so just a good council update on that.
Teresa, my only concern is conflict of interest, if I were to.
I, essentially, I have the same question.
With us being two board members.
With you being on the chair, you probably.
With us being two council members, for sure.
You might be best to table this till the next meeting as well.
Look publicly.
Yeah.
Maybe we'd have to wait till the second year or the next meeting in July to at least have a, um, a full air contingent, you know, hopefully. Yeah, I was wondering that too, so.
Well, with that said, as a general consensus, how does the council feel about, um, about what's left? And, and maybe not, maybe not Mark and Keel, but Randall and Jones, how do you feel about what's left of this?
Well, I don't see any problem, I think right now we're probably in a good enough spot that we can, that we can give the, give the money. I don't see, I don't see that that's gonna be a, gonna be an issue. And of course, hey, we have a full-time economic development director, we've hired a group to do a campaign, if the city's not gonna be on board for this thing, we're in trouble. So I believe that I would say that the city better be on board for this thing, so.
Well, and I think it's important for people to see our support of this.
Yes.
Um, and that we're willing to step up and make the commitment, and that we have the trust of the HADF members and board and all of that, that they're moving things along.
I know when we give the overview in some of the, you know, meetings, that is, people are, well, one is South Dakota, and Al and I, and gave it with them, and they, they haven't signed the pledge, but they were quite impressed with the city's commitment and just, as a whole of the plan. I mean, I think they kinda surprised them, would be my feeling, I guess, it was a very good meeting. Um, and we've had some interaction with them since they kind of tabled it amongst themselves as far as amount, but they haven't ruled it out, of course, but, uh, and that goes with other meetings that we, you know, told the story, and everyone that we've told is quite intrigued and excited for, for progress and move forward, so.
I visited with John Brown, he mentioned their contributions to the campaign that Yankton had, and so if we can, I don't know what that is, I haven't had time to look at that, but he kind of pointed me in a direction, and so there, that's, that is promising. And, um, I guess, I would, I would ask for Scott Nelson to chime in if you have a minute, because you were perhaps on the, on the side of being cautious, and I, I would like your input on this matter as of today, because I don't expect you to come back to our next council meeting to chime in.
He might miss it so much, he might.
I will do that. Um, you know, obviously allocations of funds and, and Al and I, we met a long time ago, um, is very important, and, and maybe my concern was, was, uh, you know, I didn't have a clear view of where things were gonna be allocated. Um, and, and, um, uh, managing budgets and work and so on and so forth, that, that's where my concern was. Maybe I'm missing something as far as, uh, you know, how the appropriations would be made in the future, but, um, that, that was, that was my, my concern, and that's why I pulled back in the reins just a little bit.
Come on, Matt.
Thank you, that's an excellent question.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Awesome. So the, uh, program of work that has been submitted to the council and to the foundation board was approved by the foundation board as well as the council, has suggested allocation for each of the three pots that the executive director would work with, uh, to further the development of an industrial park, the workforce development piece, and the community infrastructure and quality of life pieces. So there's a general sense of the Senate, if you will, that, uh, the money should be directed to those three concurrent priorities, although not necessarily all at the same time. That said, I refer back to Justin's mention of the fact that there will be an investor council, which will formally, um, be constructed such that the public sector and the private sector make key decisions on a year-to-year basis, on what the priorities are gonna be for year one, two, three, four, and five, and what dollar allocation should accompany that program of work for years one, two, three, four, and five. So the decision is going to be made actively year for year by an investor council that is formally construed to be public-private, whereas right now, the city council is public sector, the foundation is, um, so that it'll be a kind of like combined suitable, um, organization of probably five, seven, nine, eleven persons who will represent, um, all of the sectors that have participated in the campaign. So large-level investors meeting and small-level investors will be participating on a rotational basis year over year, so that a wide representation of all the investors are represented, and such that the decisions that are made to go forward are made truly in a partnership format.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank this council, the previous council, current HADF board, uh, NCS, and, and the commitment that's been made to this public-private partnership, it's unprecedented in Hartford, it's unprecedented in a lot of communities, and the, the feedback that we've gotten has been very positive, and the relationship that we've developed with the HADF has been, um, continued, continually getting better, and so I really look forward to the potential that this will bring to our community. It's, it's maybe hard to wrap our minds around the ripple from this, so I'm excited, thank you.
Yeah, determination, moving forward with everything that was going on all at the same time, um, it's, now, same, there's been, there's been a lot of these things maybe put on hold, and, uh, the confidence that, that our business owners and our community members and even this council have had both forward is that I'm willing to drive ahead with this no matter what, so I, I appreciate that from the council, previous council, and, um, and the board and everything, it's, it's impressive, so.
That said, should we move this to the next meeting and put it on as an agenda item that we'll talk about?
Teresa?
Is Mark gonna be the official board member?
Yeah, that's the best way to do it.
Then we always talk about three.
Then we'll get you the answer.
We have that for. Yep. Yep. Not out of the life count, it's worth it, well, let's, let's make sure we don't have any conflicts going on here, so. Good. Are you making a motion to table?
We, we didn't really have it on, or did we have it on the agenda there or no?
Yep.
New business.
Consider it a base.
Oh, okay. I'll table it then till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. You vote? Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have? No, first of all, thank you, thanks. Apologize, we didn't realize it was gonna match up that way tonight, um, with, uh, a couple people missing, and with it matched up, but thank you, thank you for the update, and, um, forward to Justin listening to my next speech. Do we have a representative for the church softball plan? Or is it just as we see in our, Lord? There you go.
Seth Nelson, Little Ryan, you're still the avenue from South Dakota.
Hi, how are you doing?
Um, the only reason I'm here is because about a month ago, I received a call, uh, from, um, Terry, um, Prober, uh, in regards to softball, and, and, uh, you still playing? He's the only guy I've ever seen that can check swing a home run. Again, check swing, it's a home run. Uh, it's unbelievable, yeah, anyway, um, so, uh, they were fighting seriously. Cravis, you can't believe it, he check swings and he is.
Divine intervention.
And, um, they, this is a tradition that, that I was, had the honor of, of being the, um, commissioner of, I don't know, fifteen-plus years ago, um, and I don't play very much anymore, but, uh, they would like to continue on a, on a, uh, we'll call it part-time basis, is not a, and then Gabe, you've already played once, twice?
Two times, yeah.
Couple times, okay. So Gabe, I'm gonna ask you, let's just put Gabe on the, on the table, how has the protocol been as far as when you meet at six thirty on Sundays?
Uh, informal.
Informal? Did you? Yes. Yeah, the, not many people have, have shown, they kinda wanna get sanctioned here a little bit to the point where they can just do a pickup softball game, is really what it is.
Pretty good description.
What?
Good description.
Okay, okay. And, and, uh, Jason Carles, um, kinda gave you a quick synopsis of, uh, I, I sent him the AJSA, uh, synopsis, and I, this is what we got back, so, uh, but, um, you know, it's. you know, it's pretty, kinda dry, and, uh, the folks that play this, this game, and, and, and I think it's a very great outreach program for, for the area churches. And I do mean area from Colton, Brooks, so on and so forth. Um, it's been going on for a number of years. Obviously, this year was, was a, 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 a little bit of a hiccup. Um, but, you know, their practices are as, as you can read. Once again, a reminder come budget time that if anybody else can read what you're reading, Whiteboard, it's looking really good right there, come budget time, there's my plug, I got in. And, uh, at any rate, um, so basically, six-thirty, church league softball pickup every Sunday from now, I believe until shortly before Labor Day, is what has been requested to use the city parks for, or city park, only one, uh, 'cause there's not gonna be that many people, and apparently it will show up, and we have had two full teams. Yeah. Uh, uh, so, there it is in a nutshell, uh, and I'll leave you with this parting caveat. The Canaries are playing baseball, why can't we play church softball? Questions for me that I can't answer?
We approve, we approve the ASA and the Softball Association.
H A S?
H?
H A S A.
Yeah. Softball Association, H A S. This looks plagiarized directly from that.
Yeah, that's all right. We told them. They, they allowed that. Yeah, they allowed that.
Well done.
It's true. I move that we approve the softball, church softball league application for play for the 2020 season.
Second, where? Discussion. I, now, who?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes. There you go, Scott, you got something fast.
Mark, I wanna see you jump just like he moved.
Been a long time.
Check some home run, man.
Been a long time since he's had something get passed.
Where are you going, man?
He's bumbling, no, I'm not, I can't.
You're in more aggression.
All right. All right. We're gonna keep, we've got discussion about pets in the city parks. So, I know this has come up, I'll let Craig and Teresa kind of get a little bit back on this.
Craig kinda brought this up, so I'll let people talk about it.
Well, the main park, we've always had signs, no, no pets allowed. And when jamboree comes around, we kind of look the other way and let people walk the dogs through there. People walk on the sidewalks with their dogs. For the most part, most people do clean up after them. We've never really made any commitment with the sports complex. I've had a lot of people ask me, if you can, I said, I really don't know what the rules are out there. I said, so, I'd like to just see what you guys' feelings are with it and get something clarified. So we actually do have a, more of a policy in place with all the park systems, you know, instead of just one park, the other ones, we're not sure with what is what.
It actually, there is actually ordinance, an ominous ordinance says no pets in the parks. But what do we consider the parks, with the bike trails, the sports complex, I mean, it's not clarified there. And like Craig says, I mean, it's pretty much ignored, and it's hard to manage. So, it, do we still need that in there or not? So we thought it'd be, you know, a good discussion to have by the council, 'cause, um, you do see, I think everybody owns a pet in town, or two.
It might be something where we have, like in the ordinance, no pets on the playground area, you know, like the sand and the wood chips area. No pets on the ball fields, you know, or something like that, I mean, or, you know, sports fields. So just more of a clarification, you see a lot of, like I said, a lot of pets, and it doesn't, it's not just Hartford, it's in Sioux Falls too, you know, and, um.
Do we have, if we were to, if we were to say we didn't, we weren't going to have this ordinance anymore about pets in the park, is there a breakout for keeping your pet on leash when you're on?
Okay, we still have, in the ordinance as well, and it's a separate section. You still gotta have them on a leash, you still gotta pick up after them. So I mean, so whether they're in the park or you're walking them down a sidewalk in your neighborhood, I mean, it's still have to be on a leash and pick up after them, so. Which I definitely think we still wanna keep in place, 'cause, you know, we definitely want them to clean.
You know, we, we kinda sanctioned them on the bike trail, and we allowed the Girl Scouts to put up poop stops. I mean, really, we sanctioned having dogs on the bike trail. We told them to do it.
I, I mean, you always see people walking their pets.
Oh, those were for toddlers, I.
I remember that.
Well, here's our, our, it literally states, no person shall allow any pet to enter the park.
Yeah. It's very, yeah, very.
That's right. Right, so maybe, this was an eighteen eighty-eight.
And it would, it would have been if we only had one park.
I wonder if we don't need to just review that, maybe.
To me, I'll just give my personal opinion on it, is that I think it's, I, I just, I don't necessarily see the value in it anymore. I think that people have got the, the, the pets that people have been taking in the parks here in town, they're, they're cleaning up after them for the most part, maybe not every time, but for the most part. And they're keeping them on leashes. I think we need to keep something like that in place, that if you're gonna have your, your pet on city property, it needs to be under your control and on a leash. Clean up. Some of those kind of things.
Yep.
But personally, I just feel like we can probably get away from restricting pets in the park area.
And I'll, I'll say to us living right, right by the bike path there, um, and I'm, you know, I know that in other cities and whatnot, they have on a leash or under your direct control. Because we, we do have hunting dogs that are, like, by the side the minute that they either whistle or they say something. And I, we see it a lot with, there's a couple of guys that run, and their dogs are like, and then I'll hear it from our deck, and they say one word and that dog is right there. So, I, you know, I guess I wonder about just a leash if, now, my dog, I'll keep on a leash, because he's not that good. But, you know, I, I feel like if those people have them under direct control, are we able and willing to give them that opportunity to continue the training? Because what's reinforced is what's kept, just like kids. And if you reinforce that direct training, and anytime you go out on those bike paths or you go out in the park, it's always training well, in my book. Now, some people probably don't feel that way, but what we've seen is really good control. I mean, we just have not, I'm not seeing people, people's dogs running away from them or being a problem. So, I just throw that out there.
We, we have seen an uptick in dog bites though, and even in the bar, in the park, we had a couple where a dog attacked a child along the bike path. So, some people are really good and have their dogs trained well, but some, not so much. And, and owners have been right there when the dogs attacked, so. Sure, we had a bad incident about a month ago that, and we're still dealing with you made society on, so. I mean, you do wanna keep that in mind.
I do like the, the part about, the part about leashes, it's pretty tangible. Either you're on a leash or you don't, it's, you can't really argue it too much. Control is a little bit harder, in my interpretation of it, might be different, like, yeah, my dog's listening to me. No, he's not. So, that part, I think, you know, I can see where there can be some ambiguity there too. But I, as far as not allowing them completely, I, but I do wanna hear Craig's opinion on that. I don't know if we're, if you would see more problems in the park or more.
I don't necessarily see, 'cause the people are doing it anyway. So I think you're, you're probably not gonna see a whole increase in them, you know, the ones that are in the parks doing it anyway. You know, maybe, like I said, have some signs around the direct playground area so that there's not dogs in with little kids and stuff like that. That's where you're gonna get your bites most of the time from. So maybe we could restrict it, you know, like, um, and have, you know, areas that are marked, you know, or something like that, however you wanna word it. But we can move the signs from the edge of the park to the playground area, to just have that restricted. 'Cause there is, I mean, people go down there to kids, there is benches that they can sit back away from them, you know, six feet back if they're on a leash, they're still not in the playground area with the dog, but their, the dog's with them in the park with the kids, you know. The only other thing, um, moving forward this year, if we do go that route, or any route, um, we'd wanna definitely get some more waste containers and stuff like that, and have in different parks in the park, just so people have access to bags and garbage, so.
Yeah, 'cause right now they put them by.
They're just on the bike.
Anywhere, yeah.
Man, I, God, I can't wait. I feel like Tony Randall forgot. Wow. All right. I've lived in one of our, I've lived for twenty-one years, and, and, uh, I have seen, I think that's so bad, uh, is that I've never seen any dog on my side of the street, which is Second Avenue, or, or the park side of the street, that where the dogs are not on a leash. And everyone has a doggy waste, uh, bag with them. I've never found any refuse in my boulevard, uh, so I don't know if that's really pertinent to, to what we're talking about here, but along the city parks, I think that people are cognizant of that, um, and, um, and it's, it's been my observation, I, I also feel like it goes a little duck too, that, um, that, uh, watching that park is that there's, uh, really not been any, and, and I would sit at my deck and watch them. And if they did, I wouldn't go stop and talk to them. And I've never had to do that once in twenty-one years. That's my two cents worth. And I'm not gonna come up here again.
Oh, don't say that.
Today.
Well, we just wanna make sure we're, um, pretty clear, we're not passing anything tonight, but it's a discussion to be able to give some direction as to maybe what you wanna see as a change in that ordinance, so we can take a look at that again, if we have a future meeting, so.
So, can I, Teresa would put together, are we supposed to bring our two cents or?
I think, I think it would be nice to give her some general direction as to what you, what you would be interested in seeing.
Well, I like Craig's idea of keeping them out of playground areas, for sure. You know, so if that were, you could be in there to restrict them, prohibit them from the playground areas themselves within our parks.
We get a dog park going, we can solve some of this.
Oh, boy, hang on, push that.
Say, um?
Dog park.
Oh.
How much money's in the Parks Reserve Fund?
Sorry, Travis, I have an idea going on, I stepped by.
You're fine.
Oh, I, I don't have the general ledger here right now, I just have the cash speed account. See exactly.
No, yeah, Teresa, I think I'd be interested in that too, is just as, if we were to amend the ordinance, take a look at what's out there, not completely restricting them from city parks, but, but highlighting the fact that we want them on a leash, away from equipment, away from playground equipment. And maybe there's a way we can free up the verbiage on there, that it's city property to include the park's sports complex, and maybe it just, maybe it just makes that a little more clear for people to understand what that is. Maybe city property is not the right words, but, um.
Well, you could, you could almost say city-owned land, that pets can be allowed except for in the playground areas, because then they could be along the bike path, they can be out at the sports complex, they could, yeah, be in, whether it be Turtle Creek or the main park, they just can't be where the playground equipment is at, something like that.
Or in the softball fields, like you said.
Yeah, or in the ball field too.
Right, right. So, okay. All right, so that gives me some direction, so I'll bring a proposal to you next week to review.
A little bit, but not totally.
Well, this is American.
Six feet long a golf cart, fifteen dogs.
All right. Next item, um, good discussion coming, a discussion possible RFP process for the wastewater treatment facility. I can give some background on this, I mean, this is something we've, we've discussed a little bit. I don't know that we necessarily discussed this, and we've talked about it a little bit, open council meeting, we've talked to Stockwells. Last council meeting, we had a, a different engineering firm that came and talked a little bit about what they can do and some of those kind of things. And, um, really with this, this discussion is, the wastewater treatment facility will be the, the single most expensive project that, that we'll do, um, at this time. At this time. And, um, and when you're looking at, you know, Mickelson Road being the biggest one at six, six to seven million, and this one's probably gonna be in that ten to thirteen million range. Um, and it's gonna affect our wastewater treatment for the next fifty years, you know. Had some discussion with council members, and we, and we've talked over some ideas about looking at an RFP process, because, um, we just wanna make sure we're spending the taxpayers' money the best that we can. That, that if there's, if there's a better way to do it, if there's something else we should be considering, if there's something else that should be going on, if there's another firm that has more expertise, if there's just, just a better way to do it, um, we should know about that before just jumping right in, so. Had a little bit of a, kind of a staff meeting, what was it, last week, um, talked to Craig and Teresa a little bit about that. Wanted to make sure that we weren't getting off pace on our time schedule with, with, with the DNR, making sure that we're, you know, still being able to stay within compliance to say, hey, we've got a plan, but we, but it might be delayed by about six months if we do an RFP process. You know, Craig's been doing some work on that, looking, checking into some resources there, so. I'll open that up for discussion. Craig, maybe you have updates, maybe you don't, I'm not sure.
I have.
Shared some things back and forth a little bit.
Yeah, I got ahold of, I sent an email out, till first I called DNR, Ray Woodworth, talked a little bit about what was going on. He definitely agreed that, you know, it would be in the city's interest to go down probably that path, for the taxpayers, you know, money-wise, and that what we're spending on this project. Basically, they said that they would be, they're happy that we are keeping them informed of what we're doing. Said I have the email, or, I thought I got forwarded to you, but, yeah, we didn't, okay. And they, they said that they would be more than willing and would work with the city as far as the timeframes go. I still don't think we would exceed our deadline or get out of our timeframe with it. I think we'd still be able, you know, be in good shape that way. So, with the DNR, there doesn't seem like there'd be any issues really, if we went down that route.
Did they have a template that they could share regarding how, how an RFP should be written, or? I'm honestly, I talked to John Brown this afternoon, and the more I thought about it, the more I was a little bummed that they did show up, because you see this in my world, if you want to be a word of the project, you help craft how the project is worded. And so for them not to be here, be engaged in this RFP process, while I appreciate the, their, their position to allow us to openly speak about different opportunities, I found that interesting, the more I thought about that.
Bitch had mentioned me before that they would be willing to do that, but they would not be proper, so.
You know, you strike a certain classic thing, right? You gotta be instrumental in crafting and wording for that classic thing.
'Cause you want your name to be on that poll.
Yeah.
I think a good step, or a step to take with that as far as, you know, what, how that would look, the RFP, I think we could get an example from like Sioux Falls, you know, and the communities that have gone out and done something. I'm sure they'll, would share their template with us, and it could be a starting point for us to look at and see if that's what, how we wanna do it or not, but, um.
Is it, how aggressive a timeline could be set? I mean, is it something that we can have crafted within two weeks or four weeks or?
I think within the month, you definitely could. I don't know if we'll get it two weeks for the next meeting, but I think, you know, I think definitely within the month you could.
And so the request for proposal is for engineering surfaces for the wastewater treatment facility. It's not. It's not necessarily a very specific wastewater treatment facility or type of treatment process. That's, that would be my, that would be my understanding of the RFP that we're speaking of specifically would be proposals for an engineering firm to bring to us opportunities, their, their experience, their expertise. Is that?
I would agree with your own voice. I would agree, I don't, I don't want to tunnel it too much to say, here's what we're going to build, just, just price it for us. You know, that's not it. I think it's more of a, we need some, we need something to treat our wastewater with and we need something that's going to last a certain number of years. Here's what our population looks like that's going to do some of those things. You know, give us your best proposal.
John was, you know, he shared some very factual numbers about Harrisburg and their seven percent growth. Those are the things that we need to see, in my opinion, when we start to sift through these RFPs. You know, what are the, what are the different processes? Are there any other opportunities for us to treat other communities' waters? Can we create a wastewater district? Different things of that nature. So I would understand that, I can understand that that could take a few weeks to get that all crafted and drafted up, but.
I think we should have something along in there with, so that they're not, if whatever companies come forward, that they're not zeroed in on a specific treatment facility or style. Because there is some that do not work in our climate and they've been built in our areas. And Lennox and Dell Rapids are struggling with their system. And there are certain systems out there that take twenty-four, seven staff to run and operate. You know, so we got to keep in mind, and they'd have to keep in mind that what we have for staffing, how, you know, you want something that's going to work and that you can expand out on and keep it moving. So whoever the firm is, we want to make sure that they're open-minded about different treatment, you know, styles or types.
To that point, if they shared with us that this, this particular style required twenty-four, seven staffing. However, we anticipate your ability to sell, if you do the wastewater treatment district, for instance. You know, we, we have seen other communities negotiate contracts for X amount of dollars with neighboring communities to treat their wastewater. Because if we look to the west, if we look to the south, to the northeast, everybody is in the same boat that we're in. And it seems silly to me for every community to spend ten to twenty million dollars on a treatment facility if we couldn't come together at some point. Maybe there's firms that have had those discussions with other communities and can navigate those contracts and how that all operates as well.
Sioux Falls has been trying for numerous years to get a district going. And some of the very first meetings that I sat through, it basically, our rates would triple because of a district. So the thing is, like, when you start bringing these other ones in, you have to, you have to have truck lines, you might have to have lift stations, who's going to maintain them, who's going to pay for that? The deal with Sioux Falls was they would only let us discharge at a certain time. We'd have to keep our lagoon system going and we'd do a batch discharge for them at that timing. So the districts are tough to do. I mean, I definitely agree that there's a lot of cities like, you know, bigger communities and that stuff, suburbs that work together on stuff like that. I think, I think it's going to be, doing something like that's either going to be down the road or you're just going to say, yeah, we'll let you come in, but this one, you're going to have to pay to do it. As far as trying to start something right off the bat, a district, because I think it's going to take way too much.
Absolutely. Yeah, we could certainly get that done and build a plant within two years.
You know, so you want to make sure the plant can be expandable to handle numerous towns down the road. You know, and that's something that when we look at a plant, we need to make sure that we are able to expand onto it. It's not, it's not as dumb for a state.
Well, I think it's just important that we're, that we're going down the road to have those discussions, all of these discussions to make sure that we get the thing that's the right fit. Because, you know, at this point, we've, the steps we've taken have gotten us to a really good spot. And I think, I think we're in really good shape there. Now it's making sure we get the right style of plant, something that fits well, that's going to be economical for the community. Because wastewater in this area is, it's, it's the limiting factor. That's, if anything's going to start to grow, if we got enough power, we got enough water, we got enough everything else, we have enough land around the area. But if we can't handle the wastewater, it will stop. It will stop everything that's trashy, like, so I think we just got to make sure that we do this right, so.
I spoke, John called me also this afternoon. The words I used with him was due diligence. I said, as a city council, if we do not do our due diligence, we got to be able to look in the taxpayers' in the eye and say, hey, we checked this deal out. We're trying to get the best possible wastewater treatment plan, plant for the city of Hartford. You know, and not just put our tunnel vision on and say, we're going to go with Stockwell since there are our incumbent engineer. I told him that. I said, we're not, you know, I said, we can't do that. I mean, it just doesn't make sense in a project this size. So I think that's partially why Travis, to your answer, I think the same thing. Why he said, well, we're not going to come to a meeting tonight so you guys can openly talk about this. Almost said to him, but I didn't. Well, we're going to talk about it anyway, if you're here, sitting here or not, you know? I mean, it's not like we're going to be scared to talk about it, because we have to.
We, we've got a couple of members to catch up, pump the speed, honestly, and we're short a couple of members, so.
Yeah.
You know, I guess if we can put that target out there of the first meeting in August, to have an RFP drafted for him, then at least we could start.
Right. I think that's a good.
And to reflect on. That'll give you guys time to brush up on your groundwater. Great, it's black, is it? Black water.
Do you need any motions or any further direction on that, Teresa?
No, I don't think I think that sounds like we'll draft something we'll talk about first meeting in August.
I just think we, we have to move forward. And at least take a look, keep our eyes on the table before we say, well, you know, before we make that decision. It just, we just can't, we can't go.
Awesome. All right, we'll keep moving. Good discussion, thank you. All right, we're moved to reports.
See you, Scott.
I never leave meetings early that way.
All right, in our packet, we have Sheriff's Deputy's report that he ran couldn't be here tonight due to training. And we believe that the next time he gives a report, he'll be here to introduce the, our, our new deputy for Hartford, so.
Oh, is he? Oh, is he?
Yes. He's taking a little sign, so. So next time we have him here, he should be introducing our deputy. So any questions or discussion on what he's got on board? Okay, Matt, we're moving on, Chamber of Economic Development director.
Hello. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you. Welcome to the council, to our two new members. Great to have you on board, the big board now. So welcome. It's been a pleasure working with you on some of the different groups and happy to work with you here as members of the city council going forward, so welcome. You have my report for the month of, I guess it's the July report, but the month of June for what we did. So far, it's been a whirlwind continuing, very busy between Chamber and Economic Development projects and also working on the Division Twenty Twenty Five campaign. Continuing to put out various RFI responses as those come into our office. And then work with Al and with North on, on the Division Twenty Twenty Five ass and trying to do the most there and work with the Chamber to accomplish their needs. Some of the big things we did during June was work with the governance committee and with the chambers, update their bylaws, and now we're continuing on that process. We updated their policies and procedures manual and now we're working on bylaws. We did release the summer newsletter. We had the December Hartford Trail Walk event that came through, had some great photos, submissions from that, had some good responses from the community for that event. And now we're looking at Business in the Park coming up soon and then our annual Golf Classic, which we're excited about. And if you haven't registered for a team or registered your company to sponsor a hole, there are still great sponsorship opportunities available. Then if you're a chairman member, we do still have sponsorship opportunities available for Business in the Park. So contact me if you would like to sponsor for Business in the Park. With the HADF, in June submitted two RFIs, which went out for some very good projects that will be benefited through the fees that are awarded those processes. We're working on a dog, working on another one that will be submitted tomorrow. So we've been very, very busy with RFIs. There are a lot of companies out there who are looking at South Dakota, looking at our region of South Dakota for where they can look at their business. And I think it's going to be vital for us to continue to work on the Division Twenty Twenty Five campaign so that we can really establish this industrial park, give us that solid footing for being, for having a good opportunity to lure these companies here to Hartford. I mean, we're pushing, trying to find space to advertise to them right now and to develop for them. And we have some great developers in the area who are willing to work with us. And so we just need to continue to give ourselves some more tools in the toolbox to accomplish that purpose. And I one thousand percent believe that the Division Twenty Twenty Five campaign is going to allow us to gain those tools to be much more competitive in pursuing our goals. Regionally, if you want to note that Dakota Resources hosted their Rural X event here on the seventeenth and eighteenth. And that was an online summit for economic developers across the country focused on rural communities. And they hosted from here in Hartford at the Buffalo Ridge Brewing. And they had a fantastic time here in Hartford and everyone really enjoyed their event. And they were ecstatic about the reception they had from the community. I guess everywhere that they were able to go around, tour while they were here. So that was great. And yeah, continuing to meet with different regional partners and just try to develop those relationships to bring more things to Hartford. Any questions?
Question or a comment?
Yes.
Mentioned working with utility providers, which are partners. There was an email from, from me regarding a contact at Suvali Energy. I keep forgetting to ask you about it. She wanted to get together and have a meeting regarding some plan development for some communities and how Suvali Energy could partner with us potentially.
Okay.
We should talk about that tomorrow.
Yeah, it must have been Jay Buckholz, but.
Yeah, Jay is, would be key. This scale is more alternative energy and consumer.
Okay.
And all that affects the, perfect of consumer.
Yeah, definitely.
Was she on that conference call, we had that? Jay and, yeah, there was another.
She am, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no.
No. Okay.
This guy is very passionate about what she does. She really is.
Alternative energy.
Other TV opportunities for, for Suvali and Parker and communities.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Happy to look into that.
Ooh, the evening Hartford.
You know, a smart person, you know, with that in the beginning. You're a model, you catchphrase your community on the daily one. You might as well start a problem. So people recognize it and, you know, I've heard comments that they are just happy that someone is so full of joy and they're willing to just unashamedly share joy with others.
I'm not a T-shirt.
You should put it on a T-shirt. Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
The only time I see him, I yell at him.
That routine is reported.
No, not the honest report. I just wanted, I had to get that in.
We got so many questions, but nothing that. All right, hey, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Be back. All right, we've also got the senior engineers report as updated. And given our RFP direction, I believe we probably won't be moving forward with the action items that we're calling, you have at this point. But any questions, comments on the report that's in there?
Questions? So you start on night. I may have asked this last time I saw that. Where's, where's Cook's platform?
So Rhonda Cookda, or? So they bought a lot behind them when the city was selling those mirrors. They want an accessory building there. They planted the property all into one, said it's two lots, it's all one lot now, so. They got renamed to Cook's Edition. I said she'll live in Infineon now in Hartford.
And I wondered, I mean, it seemed like it had been on there one other time. That makes sense?
Yeah. They're two lots into one.
Fighter Avenue flood plain. What's Fighter Avenue flood plain about?
So there is a home and they, they've done their work pro bono for us, but there is a home that built, do you remember the trailer house that was on South Fighter? The Gamber, well, Gamber had it in there. It got moved out and they sold that property and they built that new home there.
Yep.
So the home they built there is basically about two inches, two and a quarter inches below the flood plain that they needed to be. And so I've asked our engineers to just go look at and see is there a way we could work with them to get it our, is there a way to get it out of the flood plain?
Sure.
FEMA, and so they've actually gone surveyed, they're supposed to be giving a price estimate to me, but surveyed to see, and they think if they do some more cross-sections in there, there is a way to get it out there. Because the property owner, of course, then being flood plain, has to pay flood plain insurance. And he paid it last year. He come to me this year and said, well, my flood plain insurance is double. He says, can we do anything at all to get it out of the flood plain? I said, you know, you know, we did some crit work or we participated with Jordy's to do some crit work along something. I said, I don't know if we can do something like that, but, or what? I said, I'll have our engineers take a look at it. And that's what they kind of, they don't think we actually need to do any work. We just need to put some more cross-sections in it. They think it's out of the flood plain, we just need to show FEMA that it's out of the flood plain.
You mentioned pro bono, that's why I was wondering if there's any cost to that.
Not yet, but I haven't been.
Sounds like they do want to share or pay for the cost.
Yeah, so I've asked them to get a cost estimate to me of what it would take to file that with FEMA and application. And they, they've got an estimate and I wanted to send it to me, but, you know, it's going to take engineering to survey and to do the application. And then the application itself costs like eight thousand itself. So once I get that number, I like to present that to the homeowner and see what they want to do. So you may be looking at this again. Like I said, I'll give that to the homeowner, say, well, here's what we think it can do, here's what it will cost. What's your feelings? Yeah, are you going to have to pay for this or what?
Makes sense.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's what that's about.
Did Zacharias get started this week on night?
They started some removals. They're going to start doing the underground, I believe. They were hoping today, but I see they started moving some stuff in. So it'll be probably doing sewer work here this week and then moving the waters.
I see that was on their chart. I see they're doing some asphalt and Navs Landing did it.
I see that.
Slammed a crew in and out quick, like.
Yeah, they had the curb and stuff, we were up in there.
Yeah, it's been there for a while.
Yeah.
That'd be an example where, as we were discussing.
Lift, it's coming up next?
Yeah, it's coming up next, so I won't, I won't jump down after.
Oh, that's a good segue. If we don't have anything else, I'm on the Craig's report.
In my report itself, I really don't, the only thing that I have to update when Teresa's actually sent me over that, the message on that. The, the Board of Geographic Names actually. The Board of Geographic Names actually had a meeting today and they have moved it along. They passed it and moved it along to the National Board, so we're still in the waiting game, but it's close. So we hopefully will go something here. They, it sounds pretty positive with the National Board, it's like more, just more formality on it. So we're close to that. So then the other thing is the, I kind of.
This is renaming Turtle Creek Park for, you may not know what he's talking about.
Yeah, so Turtle Creek, which you recall it is actually called the unnamed tributary of Scott Creek. So I actually named that creek, so we're, it's been a long process.
There's a wall of your tongue, yeah.
Doesn't make for a t-shirt.
Assam didn't really want to change his development either up there to that. But it's been a long process and we're really close to having a name, so. Probably a year process, just in this portion, so.
Craig wants naming, right?
I'm good. So the other thing in my report is we're talking about the way our policy is. It got brought up because of my developer wanting to know about that. So I did some more research on it, talked to Sioux Falls, some engineers in Sioux Falls, some even a couple guys across the state. I talked to Thad Conrad from T and I visited Mitch too on some. The way I'd like to probably rewrite it would be that contractor can still do it the way we do it now, where you put down utilities, curb gutter, first lift asphalt and leave it sit under no circumstances or correction. The only way we can put two lifts on with this proposal would be that it would have to be, after, the second lift has to wait one season. So it has a chance to go through the freeze thaw. The other option they would have would be that they'd be able to install the utilities and gravel it. If they do that, they have to sit through the winter, over the season again. Then at that time, they could put both lifts on asphalt on it, do the, install the curb gutter and then put both lifts of asphalt on it the following year. If they choose that option though, we wouldn't maintain the gravel and get left. They would have the option to start building houses on it, but they wouldn't get occupancy permits until the first lift of asphalt is put down. So that way you're still getting your trenches to go through season. It's just if they want to start building on them right away and selling houses, they'd have to get that first lift on it, that curb gutter first lift on it. If they don't, if they're not in a hurry and they want to wait and do both lifts of asphalt at the same time, they'd have to wait till the following year to do it. The only exception I'd like to have in there, when we write this up, Mitch is going to kind of put it more together, a formal type thing. He's got some other stuff he's been, we've been working on too to get taken care of with the design standards and with these developments. The only exception would be that if like these cul-de-sacs were, were there, we see they get packed. We know there's not a lot of traffic on it. We're not too worried about the settling trenches and that stuff because there's very little, you know, vehicle traffic on them and that stuff. Or we're really confident that the contractor did a good job packing stuff. So the only exception that they'd be able to go ahead and get the curb gutter, utilities and curb gutter, both lifts of asphalt would be that both the engineer and the public works superintendent would have to both agree that they'd be allowed to do it. So it wouldn't be the engineer saying, yeah, go ahead and put it on. Or it wouldn't be superintendent saying, yeah, go ahead, let's just get it wrapped up and done. It'd have to take both of their call on that to accept it. Basically, we're doing the same things we've always done with it. It's just that we would allow them to put both lifts on in the same year, but they'd have to wait till the second year to put it on. So like for Assam's addition, for example, they did have utilities in last year, went through a season. But the way our policy is, put the first lift on that first time and a second lift the next year. So we would, in their case, we would allow them to put both lifts on this year and have it done. But with our policies right now, we wouldn't let them do it, so.
Is that where your primary concern usually falls? Is that settling?
Yeah, that's the most, plus you'll get soft spots. I, me and Thad actually talked about this for quite a while today. They, he said that they went ahead because they had contractors, well, Sioux Falls does it this way. And really Sioux Falls kind of does weird things. It's a little bit everything. But Thad said that they, he had development that they went ahead and said, yeah, go ahead and put down. He said, biggest mistake he ever made, said the road is just nothing but like a roller coaster. All the trenches are settled. He said, it's a dang mess. He likes having that first lift on and then letting it sit. Because like, like I've always said, you find your soft spots, you find your trenches, you have that, you get them fixed before the top lift goes on. So the way we're, the way we're doing it right now is really a really nice way of doing it. It just that we add the option that we will let you put both lifts on, but the trenches have to sit for a full year and the gravel has to sit. You wouldn't be allowed to put curb and gutter on it because that's just going to hold water and make, keep the roads soft, so you just have gravel and utilities.
So with Sam's deal, Craig, are we going to have, we'd have to get this passed before we'd be able to say to them they can go put their second lift up, because those utilities would end in a full season.
We'd have to pass this here and change it and then, then we allow them to go in.
Okay.
And I believe up in Naps Landing would be the same too, because all their utilities got put in last year.
Last year, okay.
All right, so we can look forward to seeing this again soon.
Yeah, like I said, Mitch is going to kind of put it in the better wording than what I do stuff, so. So many, like I said, we had some stuff that we're doing with some curb work and that stuff where, for example, on Second Street, we've got a house that's got three approaches. They're only using one, but the other ones they decided, well, we're going to change the layout of the house now, but they're not fixing, replacing the other curb and gutter. They're leaving that open. So we'd like to get them addressed too, so that if they decide to change their approach, they have to put the curb and gutter back in the one they tear out or the one they're not using. So we've got some stuff like that.
Things that we've talked about before, like grinding the curb because something actually ordinance that doesn't allow it. And yeah, so there's a few things we have addressed, have addressed with him that we want to change or ordinance.
Bring it all at one time.
Yeah.
Do you have drive, do you have drive over curbs on that list too? Because we have some cul-de-sacs that we allowed to go in with.
I, I don't remember if we were taught what we're doing with them.
We talked about drive over curbs with Mitch.
I know we've got some cul-de-sacs and I don't like them. Still removals are a real headache with them. So I don't, I don't know if we just kind of, a policy that we just kind of in-house that we look at the plans over, we don't allow it, but.
The plans never really show.
Can we just say like that the curb is up to our standard?
Yeah, we can definitely make sure we add something in there, you know, on that, because like I said, I don't know if we, we're really adding except for private road, but.
Oh, we've got, the journey, the journey cul-de-sacs are all drive over curbs.
Or are they up there yet? Have you been really up in there? So it's definitely, and they, some of the cul-de-sacs, by the time you put a curb in there, because the driveways are so big and so close together that you're only getting, and that might be why they. But we can definitely, should probably look at that too.
Is that because the lots are too narrow?
Cul-de-sacs.
Right, stock lots are.
Right, the minimum.
Are less than?
Are less than. We noticed less than, yeah, because we looked at.
It was brought to the attention of P and Z that those lots are below minimum. When we had someone else discussing why they had to make this, you had stock balls out here.
Yeah, they wanted to prove the flag now.
We'll save that.
Anything else for Craig?
No, it just looks like you're going to start, I guess there is one thing. It just looks like you're going to start doing some street sweeping. That looks great. I was just in there looking around and I hadn't seen an update on the street sweeper. I love talking street sweeping. So we haven't had an update for a month or so.
I think usually about every two weeks Jess will bring a list in.
I guess he just brought it on the list last week.
Alan's been actually jumping in and out too. If we had like a light rain or they had bad yachts, they stop.
Oh, that's a perfect time. This morning would have been awesome. I got a chance to see Craig. It's one of Craig's new dump trucks that we bought. I've heard a bunch of all the dump trucks. Pretty nice.
We've one broken back, so.
And made it all the way back?
Sent the cruise at 62 miles an hour.
You had cruise on a dump truck?
Yep.
They're deluxe.
Sounds nice.
So they actually.
They have radios.
So they actually rode, rode back on my side. Turned out, what I was really hoping, I mean, they had them outside and we drove up and I thought, boy, them are nice living trucks. And I hoped they're ours and they were, so. They had them full of fuel and ready to go for us.
They look pretty nice. They're all paid. That's pretty nice. Good work. I got the first one too. I just got you a second.
All right, where to move on? We have Karen's report in our packet. Anything that needs to be highlighted in there?
I don't know of anything different. I think she has all the vacation this week, so she'll be back next week. Any questions, but yeah, not knowing anything different.
So you mentioned our numbers are, I don't know, that's reflected here. It's not because we got an extra pay or cycle or extra week or two from last year. Your report is pretty accurate.
So when I looked at it last month, we did have an extra pay in there. Now this week we'll have this last month, so I'll be able to tell you in a week if we're on track still again. But we were still running ahead pretty good, so yeah, I'll be able to do, I'll do the sales tax report this next week when I have it in.
How many, how many golf carts have we permitted this year?
More than we'd have last year. I don't know what number we're on, run it through, but, but we ran out of permits this year. We had to order more, so.
Another 15 this month.
Yeah.
That's a lot of carts.
See, there's a lot of carts on there. Oh, yeah, so good regulation. Yes, we, we actually ran, I think we ordered, if I remember.
It's more than Hartford. We got people from other jobs coming to drive in their golf carts.
I think we ordered like 60 to start off the year with and like I said, we ran out and had to order more. Just another 25 more, so.
Just see that, that's a number I was surprised at every month. First to go, I'll wait and not buy them this year. I'll wait till next year. We're going to raise them next year.
All right, we'll move to your report, Teresa.
Okay, just a couple of things I want to point out from my report in the packet. There's a care, more money came into, through the CARES grant, the federal government released more money just specifically for municipalities and counties. And so if we have anything that's COVID related, extra expense we had to pay because of the pandemic, we can apply to get funding for that reimbursed. And what will really help, and we've had extra, you know, cleaning supplies, you know, we've had to add an extra personnel at the pool. We can apply for all of that, but the thing that's really probably going to help us out the most is that all of our contract hours, we pay for our police protection. We can submit that as getting reimbursed fully for that. So all of our random hours plus our daytime sheriff, we can submit that as getting full reimbursement. So that will help not having to pay that expense out and that's till the end of the year, so. That helps. So that CARES money will actually help us. We'll.
It's not that much money.
Looking forward to that. So I'm working with CCOG to do those applications and to get that through. And like I said, any expense we have, basically from April 1st to the end of the year, we can apply. So we'll keep track of it every time we spend, so. And then I do want to run by you, I put in a blip in there about our office cleaning. We've been having, you know, we hired an office cleaner this year to come in. It's been coming every couple of weeks. Supposed to be at Mondays at four o'clock. Sometimes Mondays works for them, sometimes it doesn't. It's kind of been hit and miss where they, you know, can't make a Monday, then have to be a different day. And it's just getting hard to coordinate, you know, if they were supposed to be on their Monday and they come a different day, well, there may be a day we have meetings going on or, you know, they're in your vacuuming and we got the phone ringing or somebody. It's just really getting hard to conduct business with the cleaners here. And, you know, the company is licensed and insured and bonded. Is it, we talked about having them come during the day, but is it possible to give them a key and have them come in the evening? Getting their certificates from them and have them clean in the evening?
I think so. I think we have to.
I don't know, I. I mean, do they have other, do they have other? Just kidding, I'm kidding. I wonder where you're going. Honestly, I was like, I don't know how that's going to work. Obviously, it's not.
And, and yeah, it's not. It's just, like I said, sometimes they come on the Monday at four, but sometimes it's 4:30 or sometimes it's a Tuesday or sometimes, oops, we get too busy and it's a Wednesday and then they may have meetings going on or we may be on a webinar and it's just vacuums going and it's just kind of hard to, yeah, kind of hard to.
What it always forces me to do when the cleaning lady comes is clear my desk off and make sure all the stuff that's not supposed to be out for public viewing is put away, so it's actually good. At least in my world. Good.
But she does have other, a couple other clients here in Hartford, but those are in the evenings. So she's got to make a special, that's why I think it's hard for her to get out here, a special effort to make them come earlier. If she can just do it in the evenings altogether, it'll be more consistent and.
Kind of just don't really offer.
I, I should ask that, yeah. So, but, so I guess, does anybody have any reservations with that?
No.
All right.
Someone related, but just a side thing, as long as, I think it'd be good to make sure that you have some sort of, some key log audit of some sort, even if it's just written out somewhere that says, I have a key to City Hall? Do you guys have a key to City Hall? Do they have a key to City Hall? Like just so that it's not just up in just your memory, that, that we can go back to something.
And we do have a camera to outside that, who's coming in through the door and whatnot. So I mean, we do have that we refer to always too, so. Yep. Okay, perfect. Otherwise, I don't have any additional, unless you have questions.
I see we're selling dirt again.
We're selling, oh yeah, we are selling dirt again. Severdine's, God, Severdine was going to take quite a bit, but he's decided he has enough on his property, so it's up for sale again. Because I, I thought at one time we had it all sold. We got about 8,000 cubic yards left, so.
Is it dirt or soil?
Good stuff. It's good. It's good, good. Oh, but I had a phone call today about some more, so I have actually had a few phone calls coming in about it, so may get rid of it.
Good. You're on it. Honestly though, is it clay or is it?
It's filter.
It's filter.
Like I said, it's a mixture. It's got, yeah, it's, it's, it's not good topsoil.
Got you there. Okay.
You wanted to use a refill.
We'll speed up. Who to talk to?
There you go. Push it if you have, you know, somebody needs it.
It's not something I do often.
All right.
All right, we've got nothing else. No questions with Teresa? I don't believe we have anything under court violence to see. I am looking for a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion to a jury. That's kind of.
All right, a motion to a jury?
I make a motion to a jury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
There you go. See? You got to get your name in here. Get your name.